Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Bilbo.
Present.
Mr. Mus.
Here.
Ms. Hough.
Here.
Mr. Merely.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Ervin.
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
Ms. Wakis.
Present.
Everybody present? Any additions or deletions from work session agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Set.
Mr. Vog, Mr. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any absences and unheard? Moving down to county manager, receive and discuss monthly division reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, as county council, as we have been doing in the past, before you is the month of July in a report form for you to review. If you have any questions, I'm open for suggestions or questions. But I wanted to point out to county council, an email and an issue that is near and dear to my heart and something that our county mental health, under the excellent guidance of Tara Vallée and our division head Lynn Hill, has been putting forth, and that's for National Suicide Prevention Week. We are currently in National Suicide Prevention Week, and if you look outside of the Luzerne County courthouse, you'll see that we have changed the courthouse lights in order to draw attention to this very, very important matter. In just, in 2018, Luzerne County lost 57 residents to death by suicide, and in 2019, we have lost more than 20 residents to date by suicide. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and these suicide attempts and suicidal ideation are far more common than people even understand or recognize. We want to be clear to the members of the public and that people are there to help you if you have any knowledge out there or if you know somebody who is facing a very, very difficult time. You can be reached 24/7 by calling 211, just like 911, it's a three number, it's a three numbers that can be called, 211. And if you know someone who needs help, please dial 211, that's, help is only a phone call away. Just recently, I read an article in the Philadelphia Inquirer about Penns Head of Counseling and Psychological Services, Gregory Eels. This individual spent his entire career in mental health and unfortunately just committed suicide earlier this week. So if it can affect these people who work within the system, it can affect anybody. It's not a sign of weakness to ask for help. So if you or someone else in your family or friends, or really anyone, need help, please ask them to call 211, and Luzerne County Mental Health will be there to support you. With that being said, I'll open myself up to any questions on the matter.
Questions from Manager Pedri.
I just have one quick question on the, under division of budget and finance on the 2019 refunds, that the budget is at 88%, and I'm assuming that should be an inter-division budget transfer because you would need to come to council for that. Do we have any idea how many outstanding appeals there are? That might be responding to refunds?
I don't know offhand as to where we're at. I think we will need one, a budget transfer. We have one that we can do within the budget of finance without going to county council at this point, that we think we will be able to cover a portion of that. I have talked to Attorney Schwager, who's representing us on all these things, and asked them to, you know, see where we're at. I think the stale case list actually reinvigorated the process, and some of these cases are now being closed out, but I can get council an update as to all the cases that are out there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, on a question on suicide. I don't know this answer, but I know in Hazleton, under the direction of Mrs. Samantha Neiman in Hazleton High School, she plays a big role for kids if they have problems, that they know where to go. Are there other school districts within Luzerne County that anybody has not been, Pittston? Is there a group set up in high school or junior high?
Yeah, we-
Where kids could actually, that have a problem or somebody to turn to?
Yeah, we have, I could speak to what happens in Pittston. At Pittston area, we have specific things in place, everything ranging from, in the middle school that I'm at, we have something called a SAP team, which is a student assistance program, where students can anonymously, you know, the big thing is a lot of kids don't want their name tied to, they can anonymously put someone's name in that may be in need of help or requiring assistance. I would tell you that probably one of the biggest things, many of the school districts I know across Luzerne County, not speaking for anyone here, we all engaged in something called Safe2Say, which was something that was initiated from the Commonwealth, from the state last year, which it comes in the form of web-based, an app, a telephone number, that it's a way for a student, if they feel there's a classmate that's in imminent danger, if there's just a problem that they need help with, and it's after-school hours and they don't know who to turn to or who to ask for help, it's a way for them to get that student's name to the proper authorities. And what happens is with the Safe2Say app that I'm talking about, it goes to the state, the state then has screeners that screen the information and take that, whatever's reported about the student, and then they distribute it appropriately. It could be to the school police officer, it could be to our school guidance counselors and guidance team, the administrators, to kind of ensure that the students get the help that they do need. I don't know if I'm answering your question, I'm just speaking with my experience, there's definitely in our schools, systems in place for students to get help, but I mean, I think what Manager Pedri has also talked about is excellent as well.
Right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Do you have a breakdown of how many of those were people under 17 and how many of them were older, older people?
I can get that, I don't have that, but, yeah, it's even sadder.
Right, right.
Okay, moving down to number two, PFM presentation borrowing update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the discussion with PFM today, Scott Shearer was called to another meeting in the western part of the state. He will be present at the next two county council meetings along with our bond counsel, George Magnotta, to review any potential borrowings for Luzerne County. Let me give you the high-level update here, I provided council with a memorandum that should be at your table here. After consultation with the county's financial advisors, PFM, please see the following. Now, as council is well aware, we are working on a borrowing in order to fund the Luzerne County 911 project. This project has been discussed in this room numerous times, is at end-of-life in December of 2019, and we wanted to make sure that that, actually December of, you know, 2020, we want to make sure that this is a matter that's going to be fixed moving forward. So we did a RFP, and we sought out banks in order to review that borrowing. We have, we asked for bank loans as well as bond issuance. In the past, we were able to, the county was mostly able borrowing through a bond issuance. We were able to financially find a, some bank loans that may be up for council's review. So basically, there are two matters that I wanted to bring to council's attention for the discussion at the next two meetings. We did receive proposals from four banks and estimated bond rates to that effect. The use of the funds are the following: There will be $22 million, $22,500,000 in new money that we're seeking to borrow. This $22,500,000 will be broken down as $20,700,000 for upgrades and improvements to the 911 system, and $1.8 million for the new voting machines. The remaining amount for those voting machines will be financed either through county cash or hopefully Governor Wolf will come through with his promise in order to fund 60% of those, of those machines. We will have a final number for county council prior to your vote as to where we're at, but $1.8 million will be our high end. This will be an 11-year borrowing, taking this borrowing from 2019 to 2030. This will also have a refund, and this is the good news, we will refund approximately $12 million of some of these commissioner format debts that came into play in 2008 and 2009. Those debts, those $12 million, the current interest rates on those are 6.75% to 8%. Just by refinancing those loans, we're looking at saving $2 million in refinancing, just to those. Want to be very clear, when it comes to these bonds, we did not extend the maturity date. So they were to be paid off on November 1st, 2027, under the new proposal, they will still be paid off on November 1st, 2027. We're basically just changing the interest rate from a 6.7% or an 8% down to just over 2%. And that in and of itself will save the county taxpayers over $2 million over the course of those, those bonds. All four of the series are at or past the call date, and there will be a cost of issuance of approximately $150,000. That is if we go with the bank loan. Now, that would be my recommendation to county council to go with the bank loan, because as council is aware from past, the bond issuances, issue, issuance are extremely expensive, and the closing costs can be quite a bit, and $150,000 in terms of a bank loan will come in less than where we want to be. There are two banks that we're currently in negotiations with, with regard to this bank loan. The first bank is, we'll go, I've just listed as Bank A here, it's a rate of 2.174%, that's locked in, that's the-
What bank did you-
I don't want to name them at this point because they're in proposals.
Okay.
But they, it is, for this bank would be, the rate would be 2.174%, and it's callable anytime with no penalty, meaning that we can pay off that, we can pay off that loan at any time should the county want to do so without a penalty. Sometimes in bonds, and the reason why those 2008 bonds took this long to get refinanced was because there's certain dates, you can't call on it, you can't refinance for a certain number of years. In those dates, it was 2018, 2019 for those bonds and the $12 million. In this loan, we can call at any time and refinance at any time if we need to, or we can pay it off anytime with no prepayment. The bank fee would be a one-time cost of $4,000, and it may partner with a local bank in order to complete the, complete the transaction. The other bank that we're also negotiating with has a little bit of a lower rate, it has a 2.005, but that rate is not yet locked in. The rate can fall up to 1.75% or rise up to 2.55% depending on changes to the county's underlying star and porous credit rating during the life of the loan. As the council is aware, we are currently at a investment-grade rating. Members of this council were on the council in 2015 when we had an investment-grade rating, and we quickly lost it, a star and porous. So, and that was in 2015. So my concern is tying our interest rate and tying the future numbers, as to financial numbers for future, for future matters for Luzerne County Council, my concern would be, where's this number going to be so I can budget that appropriately going forward? If S&amp;P decides to change our credit rating, I, this would be great if they upgraded us, and maybe we saved some money there, but I'm more concerned about the locked-in and the financial certainty that comes with as well. But once again, it's going to be county council's final decision. These are callable, but to make the whole, to make the, to make whole call, the county would have to refund or pay off her debt, but may owe a penalty to do so. The drawdown will be fully drawn at settlement, and it does contain yield maintenance agreements, meaning that if something in the legal environment changes, that changes the profitability to the loans to the bank, they may increase the rate to make the bank whole. That is not in the first loan. But the bank fee will be a little more, about $10,000, and does contain a prepayment penalty. Obviously, we're leaning towards Bank A with regard to this. Where also was a bond issuance, that we asked to be a bond issuance to be looked at, the bond issuance numbers were 2.45%, so that's a higher interest rate. So we were able to get, through the good, hard work of this county council, and the previous budgets and the audits have shown, we have been able to get a bank loan at, in the 2.1%, 2% range with instantly callable, that we've been able to move forward from where we want to be doing things, much, a huge difference from where we were 10 years ago. Now, the timeline that we're talking about would be, obviously today will be the initial discussion with council, this is the broad overview as to where we're at, and then September 24th would be the introduction of the ordinance and the first reading at the next meeting, which was, I believe will be at LCC, is that right, Mr. Chair?
Correct.
September 24th. PFM presentation to council on the potential borrowing, and I've also asked PFM to give us a current debt overview, to tell us about what the current debt, the current debt matter looks like. October 7th will be council adopts the ordinance, or doesn't adopt the ordinance if council moves forward with it, and then the final settlement will be November 26th, and then will be moved forward in that matter. Also, the county council's review will be a draft ordinance, which was provided to me today by our bond counsel, George Magnotta. He will be here on September 24th in order to review the legalities of the, of the borrowing ordinance, which I have also provided to council here today.
Questions for returning? Pedri.
Yeah, I'm doing the math here, and I'm trying to figure out where the 34.705 is coming from. So I get 22.5, 22.5, and then it looks like a total of 11, 11,285 in the refinanced money?
Yeah, I could take that.
And that comes out to 33.785?
Yeah, so I, there was, I went in there because if we went with the bond deal, obviously we're going to list all the options for council, but as, as Manager said, if we went with the bond deal, it would have to pay a lot more for underwriting, so that's how this was put together, had to have the biggest assumption. Obviously, if this council doesn't go with the bond deal and we go with the bank, either Bank A or B, that could possibly wiggle down, but it had the provision in there to cover the underwriting costs and the bond costs if we went with the 2.0, because we didn't obviously know the rates at the time it was put together.
Right.
So that's, that's what the math is very is.
So the 150, if you go with the bond, with the bank, the 150 will be wrapped into this, and that would take it up to, it looks like 33.9, 35?
Right, it'd be less than the 35, it'd be down to a little bit less than 34.
34, it's at 34.7.
A little bit less than 34, correct.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how we got the 35, when we put it together, we didn't know if we're going to get a bond or a bank, it was to put the RFP together, assuming comparable fees we had in other bond deals.
Okay, so what is PFM recommending? The bank?
PFM is recommending the bank, the first bank loan.
Okay. David, I'm sorry, I don't even understand why we are considering second.
Well, I think the second one does have the lower rate.
Only if, only if your standard and porous rating doesn't change.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's a really big gamble, in other words, a locked-in rate.
That's a gamble, as opposed to the locked-in rate of 2.174, and I do like the fact that we can prepay at any time, so if council is in a position at some point to prepay that and close this, to close the debt out the way the council has been closing debts out.
I mean, the bank fee is significantly different. Eric?
We're leaning, I believe they're leaning towards Bank A heavily.
I think it, though, he hasn't, the manager through the RFP has an obligation to show us or tell us the different options that are available. Decision-making will come at this table, but, you know, I think it's good to know what the competitive market is, and sometimes I think when you have an RFP out there-
Yeah.
-you can go back to those people and maybe get a little better situation as far as some of the terms.
Who's representing the county as bond counsel?
Saul Ewing. Saul Ewing, county council picked Saul Ewing in 2015?
2015.
2015.
15 for that refinancing, I believe?
Yep, correct. Anyone else? Yes?
Well, I have, I have another question. So, first of all, we, the council hired a lobbyist to supposedly help with getting some of the money for this stuff, for 911 and-
I talked to him today, and we believe we're going to have an update for county council October 7th.
Okay.
And I hope that that will be a significant amount of money.
Okay. And then I have a question about the 22, well, the 20,700 for the 911, which I know was on last week's, the last meeting's agenda, and we talked about 911. But in terms of how the RFP was written, I'm a little concerned that there were only two, two companies that bid on it, and, you know, we've been getting the impression that analog is dead, but I believe that there are systems that have been adopted by other counties that are actually not the, you know, what's been promoted here, that would be significantly cheaper. So could you, could you talk a little bit about how that RFP went out?
I'm going to have to refer that to Fred Rosenkranz and MCM, they'll be present at the 24th meeting to move forward from where we're at. I couldn't get into the, to the technical aspects of this RFP.
Mr. Rosenkranz has a family emergency.
That's okay.
He's not available, but I think, last meeting we talked about, there was only three manufacturers or three vendors who were able to handle that kind of a project. Only two chose to submit information, and they seem to be, I believe Mr. Rosenkranz and the gentleman that was seated at the table indicated they, they were both reliable, reputable kind of vendors, and obviously with the size and the importance of the project, it's important to have that type of a vendor involved. So why the third vendor didn't propose, they may have other projects that they didn't fill at this time, they could-
I was just wondering if there were certain, yeah, if there were certain specifications that were written into the RFP that might have excluded anybody else from bidding, because, you know, again, that whole, the idea of, that we can't use analog, I don't know that that's actually the case, I don't think that there's a requirement in the law for exactly what system we have to go with, and I'm just wondering how, how it was determined, exactly what we were, what we were going to do.
I think the big issue was, what is going to be supported after December 31, 2020?
Right.
And if the analog is not supported by the vendors or by the companies out there, as things develop, issues develop, and things break down, that will certainly have an effect on that operation of that system. And as you well know, the county is totally involved in that 911, and it's a public safety issue-
Sure.
-across the county. And I think some of the information that was provided last meeting indicated that by moving forward with the technology, we would improve the system, provide better coverage, provide better connections, things of that nature that will be a positive for the citizens out there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because again, you know, with Wyoming, you know, comparing to what Wyoming County just adopted, I was wondering how, what we're looking at is comparing to what other counties in the state are doing.
Well, I think there's, there's been several counties that have already moved forward, and Erie County was, the gentleman who sat at that table was one of the people who had worked with Erie County and moved forward on that.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnity, I've got a couple of questions around that, too. You're mixing vendor and manufacturer, that RFP didn't allow vendors to bid on this project, that RFP was restricted to manufacturers of radios, okay?
Okay.
So, so vendors weren't allowed to participate in this, and sometimes vendors can get better prices by using GSA schedules, you know? General Service Administration schedules-
Yeah, I've used those in the past, Mr. Ervin, and not necessarily always true pricing.
Right, exactly. So sometimes a manufacturer can say, "I'm going to give you a $2 million discount," but he's going to jack the prices up that are higher than what's on a GSA schedule.
And I think a lot of that was revealed last week, that there were some incentives or perks, whatever you want to call them.
I'd like to see them more specific, and I think Linda has a good question, I mean, if Wyoming County just put in an analog system, and we're keeping the analog pager system, we're not, we're not switching that over to digital, analog is still alive. You know, what specific part of this 911 system is reaching its end-of-life? Is it the handheld radios that the fire departments and police chiefs, the police departments use? Or is it the microwave systems that connect, you know, the microwave links between the county and that we use our handhelds off those microwaves? So I'd like a little bit more detail on what specific part of the system is end-of-life? I mean, you've got consoles, you've got microwaves, you've got antennas, you've got towers, you've got handhelds, you've got portables, you've got mobiles, you've got a whole array of communications, which part of that is end-of-life? Because analog is not end-of-life if another county just put analog in. Analog is not end-of-life if we're keeping the analog pager system. I understand-
I think New York City uses analog for the emergency services.
Exactly. So, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of questions after I've read this, this information that I still have regarding the amount of money that were needed. And the other question is, you know, I still get these, these things in my personal email, every, every quarter you hear updates from the federal government on applications for grants for fire departments, you know, public safety grants that are there. Why aren't we applying for these now? If you know how many radios, if you know how many radios are needed in the communities, why aren't we applying for these now?
We are.
Well, we are.
Yeah. We apply through one through the south, south side, the south, south side of the county, put in for a million dollars grant, we're working with the Back Mountain Fire Fighters as well.
Yeah, so every, every department, you should have a list if this consultant did his job, of every radio that every department needs.
We are.
And you ought to be going to those people, either with a boilerplate and saying, "Hey, you need to apply for a grant to see how much money you can, you can shake loose so the county taxpayers don't have to pay for it." You know, I hope we're not doing it the lazy way, that we're going to pay for it all and then later on, they're going to have to go out and buy additional radios from their town. And the other question is, is every community, is every fire department, is every police department in this county on board with this system? I like to see a list of who's on board and who's not on board with it, because there's a cost that's going to be associated with towns, communities, fire departments, volunteer fire departments, you know, that's, that's still hidden at this time. Which towns are on board with it? Which communities, which volunteers, and which police department, and which ones are not? Are we going to buy new radios for state police? Because we use state police here.
No.
No? How are they going to get, tie into us then if we're not?
These are all great technical questions, that went Fred Rosenkranz and the guy was-
Well, these, these aren't technical.
That is absolutely a technical question.
There's nothing technical about these questions.
I'm going to make sure that Mr. Fred Rosenkranz and our consultant will be here at the next meeting to answer all your questions. These are some great questions.
That was the other question I had about the consultant. When I sat here and listened, that guy had worked for the county since 2006, 2007. How did he end up being the consultant? I, when that, that RFP was being discussed here, I heard that this guy had put a system in Erie and all the grants he got for Erie, and then come to find out, he worked for the county since 2007. He should have known that there were grounding issues if there were off of antennas. I mean, grounding is nothing, nothing more than ground rods in the ground, and so if you get a lightning strike, the lightning goes to the ground and it doesn't burn up your equipment. I mean, these things that he said he fixed, well, they should have been fixed a long time ago if he was working for the county since 2006, and not fixed from 2010 to 2014 to help bring the system along. I mean, so I, I don't know, I have a question now about the individual that we hired as the consultant, and whether he has any bias. And then, and then the RFP that he put out, did he put an RFP out to the manufacturers and say, "Build me a system," or did he design a system and say, "This is what I want"? Because if you just tell the manufacturer to build you a system, they'll, they'll try to gold-plate everything.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping the consultant would be here tonight to answer a lot of Steve's questions, too, because now we're going to-
Wait a minute, we had the people here last week, two weeks ago, to answer those questions.
Right.
And we'll bring them back if there are more questions.
Well, hopefully it'll be-
Tonight we did not have them on the agenda, so they didn't have an obligation to be here.
But just, I'm not saying they had an obligation to be here, I'm just saying, if we got a quick turnaround time October 7th to move forward on some of these other items, you know, we want to make sure we can ascertain exactly what we're paying for, I think that's the big issue here.
And Mr. Rosenkranz would have been here, except he has-
I totally understand that.
Yeah, and that's, that's a priority for him.
Yes, oh, I'm not grudging him whatsoever.
Yeah.
But I think there are a lot of questions that have come out of-
And that's why we had them on the agenda last week, two weeks ago. And all that information was provided to council two weeks ago.
Yeah. Well, I did ask specifically if the folks on the ground, the emergency services and fire and, and police, if they were satisfied with, with the change, and I was under the impression, answer to my question was, "Oh yeah, it was overwhelmingly positive." Since then, I have heard that's not quite the case, that people do have a lot of reservations.
From who?
Yeah.
Giving me names?
From folks on the ground.
I've heard from a bunch of different people who call me, so send me the names, Harry, I'll call them.
I, I-
Yeah, but I'd like you to provide us with the names of, of all the towns and all the communities that this consultant went to, with a list of who's on and who's not, who's happy with it, who's not.
I'm with you 100%.
All those things I asked, if you put them verbatim, give those to Fred.
I'm with you, I'm with you 100%.
Fred answered, and me in writing.
Okay, well, if the people reach out to anybody in this council that doesn't like the process, or doesn't like the project, send them towards me, I'll send them to Fred, I'll be happy to have them sit down, talk with them, make sure they understand the process. If they don't like it, that's their right to not like it, obviously, but, you know, just to say people don't like it without putting specific people's names in is a very difficult way for us to refute comments. I'm going to say people like it, and then that's the way, that's the way around it. Listen, I don't want to do a 911 project, I don't think anybody in this room wants to do a 911 project. I mean, like, when I was county manager, I didn't get up in the middle of the night saying, "Boy, I sure hope I can do a $20 million 911 project, I can't wait for that." This isn't the reason why I took this job, but this is what I have. The technical, the technical, the, the people who have worked with us for 911 say that we need a new 911 system. We put an RFP out, we've got the best numbers that we can come up with, we have a borrowing in front of county council that you, that says that this is how we'll pay for it. If council's not interested in moving forward with this project and you want to keep with what we were going with, that's county council's prerogative. You control the purse wing, the purse strings. You could say, "This is the way we want to handle things." If you don't like this project, or you don't want to fund a certain portion of it, that's up to you. My recommendation would be to err on the side of public safety. We employ these people for a reason, we employ our consultants for a reason. If you don't like those individuals, I suggest you vote no on the project.
It's not going to be 20 million, Dave, because the consultant lobbyist is going to get that cost way down.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, consultant lobbyists and all these grants that we're supposed to get should get that number way down.
Yeah.
We should be able to pay all that money back.
Well, well said. And we'll discuss it. I, you know, I listened to what the manager said, and I agree with him, probably nobody really wants to do the project, but we do have an obligation for public safety throughout our county. And that, that's an obligation we have to live up to, whatever the involvement has to be, whatever the issues are. Thank you. Moving down to number three. We have a report from Northeast Revenue Services in regards to properties in the repository.
Um, yes, once again, this is in front of county council, this is our properties that have come through repositories, has in the past. These individuals have put in for, for bids for, for these properties in the repository. As council is aware, the longer we keep these properties in the repository means that the council, the county would be liable for any injuries that would occur on these matters. We have reviewed them with the Northeast Revenue, and they have agreed that all the bidders are currently not delinquent on any taxes or anything along those lines. And, you know, if there's any questions, I'll take them back to Northeast Revenue.
Questions in that regard? Road and Bridge, County Roads Status Up Report.
All right, did we get the computer working?
Yeah, I worked the computer. I'll let you hear it and talk.
All right, we're going to turn this over to.
Brian, do you want to put a few of the lights down so it'll be a little easier to observe?
As members, members of council, we were asked to put together a presentation of Road and Bridge projects for council's review this evening. I asked Mr. Plesch, I just want to mention, what we've, what we've put together is a brief summary of projects that are either recently completed, in progress, and then we have a short piece at the end going over a prospective 2020 construction schedule. So, I just want to mention also that the engineering staff has been working very diligently with all of these projects. We have quite a number of projects going on due to the bridge funding that's become available. Mr. Plesch is handling all of the bridge projects almost in, in their entirety, along with our consultants, on his own as far as project management. Greg Pars and Staff Engineer Ted Stark have also been working as project managers for the road projects. So, I just want to give them credit for getting those completed in a timely manner, and without any hitches so far, things have gone very well. At this time, I'd like to hand this slide presentation over to Mr. Plesch, who has put this together for you, and I've reviewed, Mr. Pedri's reviewed, I think it's a very accurate summary of, of what's been happening recently on our roads and bridges throughout the county.
Uh, the first bridge is recently completed, was done early in the season. It's on Blithburn Road in Rice Township. It is a superstructure replacement. If anybody doesn't know what that is, it's basically the top half of the bridge is being replaced, the steel beams, the deck, and the barriers. This was a, we kept the original stone abutments, and we rehabbed them, and they had no major damage, so we continued. Act 13 bridge money was being used to fund the construction. If you, if you're ever driving home on 81 South, just past New On Goleg, you could see it as you look over to the right. By the way, Blithburn Road is a county road. And then there's the before pictures, as the corroded steel beams and the approaches, and then that's the completed. As you can see, we kept the original stone abutments, and we put a new abutment cap on, and new steel beams, barrier, and structure monogide rail.
Good job.
Second bridge is currently under construction. It's in Halla Road in Cunningham Township. That is also a superstructure replacement. Just, was a prefab steel trust that was removed, and we had a consultant help us out with that. Fab was the contractor, and also Act 13 money was used for that. It's in the progress currently right now, and will be completed sometime in October. And that's the old bridge. It's a pretty wide span, structure almost 70 feet, and the new beams are currently in place with the deck going on. Well, this was the same thing, it was a superstructure replacement, but in order to keep the weight down on the new structure, we used open grate steel. That's going to be placed on top of the deck instead of concrete. They should, again, they should finish up by the beginning of October. Those are the in-progress photos. Same thing, abutment, abutment cap was put on at each end, and the new steel beams were laid in place. Third bridge that we did is Ridge Road in Hollenbach Township, was close in location to the Halla Road Bridge. That is a full-blown replacement. That was a, we replaced, was a trust there at the beginning, and now we replaced it with a prefab steel trust on new concrete abutments. Hunt Engineering helped us out with the design, and the same contractor on the Blithburn Road Bridge also was the low bidder for this bridge. Again, Act 13 fronts are being used, and it's a million-dollar project. Notice the difference in price, because this is a full-blown replacement. It means they dig down six feet below the stream, and they put up new abutments. So, more demolition, more concrete, more structure. And that will be, that is completed, actually. And there's the existing bridge as it was, but a wooden deck that was closed for almost two and a half years, and now it's a new trust put on with a concrete deck. And, that's the, all the major bridge projects. There is also a couple of smaller rehabs and fixes that were, had to be done during inspections. Not all considered major, but this is not all inclusive of all monies being spent, their projects being done, or just the major ones replaced. The first road that we have done, which is a long in the waiting for, is Chase Road in Jackson Township. Is a reconstruction, which means you're removing all the material and putting new material back. Penn Eastern was a selected consultant on the job back in 2010. American Asphalt is the contractor, being that they were a low bid, despite dumb luck, and their entrance is right off of Chase Road. This is money being given to us by Pendot. I think it's 80% federal, state puts in the share, and we put in the rest through our allocation with the MPO. It's over a mile roadway, and it should be completed first or second week in October. That's more involved than just a reconstruction, is they're replacing cross pipes, asphalt structures, and they're keeping the road about 26 feet wide, as opposed, it was only 24 to begin with. So, with some widening involved, more material, and there's also a Pendot job, which means it goes through UCMS, and they're doing inspection, and they're doing, they're handling it, managing it for us. We have little or no control over, they'll handle it for us and then turn it back over to us. That's what it looked like prior to construction. And that's what it's currently constructed now. As you can see, we put new asphalt structures in, they removed all material, put new material back, and they're just about at the wearing surface stage to put material back. So, they said, they should finish it shortly. The next bridge was a bigger project for us, it was done in-house. It's County Road 38, which is Foothills Drive in Butler Township, Mountain Road in Sugarloaf Township, and Walden Avenue in Cunningham Borough. This was a combination of a full-deep reclamation, which means the material stays in place, and a mill and overlay, and base repair towards the Walden Avenue and partial of the Mountain Road section. And that was all due through, determined by testing. You don't use full-deep reclamation. Pendot allows us to use it on liquid fuels money if it's tested, to determine if it's required or not. Because they don't want you using it if it's not. Therefore, that's why it was split up 75-25 in the areas. That was done in-house, and Pennsys was the low bidder. Liquid fuels money is being used for that, and it was a project length of about almost five miles. And it was completed at the, end of August. The next road is, there's the before and after, there's the finished product. I mean, I'm sure anybody who's driven on it or lives in that area will be sending me a thank you card, I'm sure, Christmas time.
If council, if, if council will, will recall, this is the road that Butler Township, Sugarloaf, and Cunningham Borough are now going to be taking over. The county's in the process of working with other municipalities for turnbacks. We believe that we're going to use this project as a model project, that we can go to our other townships and say, "Hey, listen, look how, what a great job. Put that before picture up, Brian, if you wouldn't mind." That's, that's beforehand, and then we put the time, we put the time and effort into it, but in-house, to handle it with liquid fuels money, and we made a beautiful new road. And if you go to other municipalities, and we say, "This is what Butler, and Sugarloaf, and Cunningham got," we're hoping that they would also take us up on our offer, and they would have the liquid fuels money in order to maintain a new, a new road from where we're at.
Mr. Pedri, I would, I would recommend that you engage Representative Bobak and Senator Baker, and maybe try to get them to help you to transfer Chase Road either to the state. They can probably put some legislation in if it's, you know, let's see how far it goes up in the vote, see how much clout they have, and get that road off the county books, and get it on the state books.
That sounds good.
Or let the municipalities do. I think that's, that's one you should approach them on.
Dan Permitzky and I tried to do that with Pendot.
I know.
He offered to give it back under 27 miles.
I know, but.
What did they say?
And what was the answer?
He said, "Thanks, but we'll get back to you."
Right, right.
And that was how many years ago?
Yeah, so, so you give them a new road, though. You've got a new road. You want to keep it this way, take care of it yourself.
Uh, the last major road that we just recently completed is County Road 37, is East County Road in Sugarloaf Township. That is a full-deep reclamation from start to finish, and that was done also in-house with the help of a testing company. Butler Materials was the contractor, and it is funded by the Office of Community Development, a CBG grant we got for. That being said, if anybody asks why we didn't do the entire East County Road in Butler Township, it's because the Sugarloaf Township area was listed as monastic low income in that section, and that's the only place we could use the grant money. So, that's why we decided to do the Sugarloaf Township section. It was about 1.7 miles of roadway. That's the before pictures of preconstruction, and that's the completed product. Looking ahead, these are the 2020 potential construction projects. Bysels Road is a mill and overlay with base repair in addition of bike lanes. That's a project we got for a multimortal grant to do that with a match from our liquid fuels fund. Orange Road has some major drainage issues on it, we're getting that project done. Hanover Industrial States were adding bus shelters, sidewalks, and AD ramps in about 13, 14 locations.
That was the grant that they got.
That was also grant money. We're going to be doing that sometime next summer. The West Liberty Street Bridge will be the first bridge used with the $5 registration fee money. That was a bridge that was an emergency situation when we had it downposted to, I believe it was four tons or three tons. The other three bridges on Honey Hole Road in Butler Township, that's community development money. So, they're being done with that. There's three of them, two small, one larger, and one, all being done together in one package. Also, the 57-309 on East County Road in Sugarloaf Township is being done with, it's actually at the end of that paving project, right before you get to 93. That's also being done with block grant money. The last two bridges are, have been hurdles, to say the least, because they are old trust bridges. The Mill Mountain Road Bridge has been closed for almost close to a year, I want to say, a little less maybe, but we finally got historical approval to replace it because a, somebody from New York State with a horse farm wanted the structure. So, he's getting it, as long as he pays for the transportation, he can have it. Which gave us the hurdle from historic development side, is that they found another use for the, the old bridge. It's, to my opinion, it's beyond repair, but he's only going, that's, it's like a 70-foot span. He's only going over a small creek for his horses, it's more for show than anything. But, and Everett's Road is also a trust bridge, it has been closed for a while, and that should be in place next year also. The last two are funded by Act 13 funds. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Plesch?
Just one comment, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Excellent job, Mr. Plesch.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Manager, I love it. Could we put that on the website to show the public, too?
Yeah.
If there's a link, because that's something.
It'll be up.
Yeah, I, I think that would be great.
It'll be up tomorrow.
I'll send it over to Ikey.
And Mr. Irvin, you heard that there were some grants involved there to get those projects done?
Yeah, except that Mr. Snee moved down to, down to Sugarloaf with all of his money, so we couldn't finish that piece. He raised the income level, can't use CBG money anymore. Mr. Snee, you're just state in Hazleton.
Number five, which is the purely dedication of the County Road 38, which we just saw the pictures of, to the Borough of Cunningham.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the next step of the, of the transfer over. Butler Township began it. We're working on Sugarloaf with their, with their pieces as well. This is the Cunningham Borough piece as well, to get everybody together.
And I was in touch with the solicitor for Cunningham Borough, and they're obviously in, in agreement with it, which is why the resolutions before council.
Question?
Yes.
So, do I, I'm assuming that the dedication for public use is the terminology that we use to turn it over to the municipality, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, your third whereas, shouldn't it say the dedication for public use of the portion of Luzern County Road? It doesn't quite make sense without the "for public use" in it there.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we can add it, I just didn't put it the.
Yeah, it's everywhere else where it says dedication for public use, or dedicate for public use. Can we just add that in that?
Sure.
Second line there? Okay.
Where are you adding that, Linda?
Third whereas, after dedication.
Because it says it every, everywhere else.
Yeah. Because when I first read it, I thought, "What are they dedicating it to?" And then I read the whole rest of the resolution, and.
Yeah, that's just the.
Okay.
The terminology that's used.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wakis?
Yes. If you look at the agenda, beginning on page 55, the Act 13 committee has been needing to adapt the original, or the, not the original original, but the latest edition of the Act 13 grant application. As you recall, we've held $14,000 in reserve for the purpose of, or for financial support for projects in Luzern County that help in the, in the remediation, having anything to do with the wood-boring insect population. And so, I'm very grateful to the committee, we've, we've met several times, we've done some hard work, and we present to you what we've done. We have basically taken the Act 13, and we have eliminated anything that we didn't think was necessary. We've kept the purpose statement, and by the way, the area on page 56 that's highlighted in yellow can now be eliminated. I spoke with the solicitor, and we were afraid to strike that out, not knowing if that was absolutely necessary legal language, but apparently it's not. So, it's very, very simply stated, right from the Act 13 legislation. The eligibility in this case, we said only municipalities in Luzern County. We, the request guidelines, if you notice, requests shall not exceed $2,500, one request a year. We're looking for a report with estimates for the funding. All the projects have to be located with Luzern, within Luzern County, and they have to be, able to be completed within 12 months of the approval, the application approval. If you look at the application submittal or submission process, all the applications are due by April. We have the, the application on, we're going to have it online. We have the, the application on, we're going to have it online. They can submit by email, mail, hand delivery. We're asking for a final report. Just as before, we're, we're telling folks they can always contact Sharon Lawrence, our clerk, with questions. I think it's really important that we take a look at the timeline, which is on page fifty-eight. In December, we would identify definitely the amount of funds available. The availability would be announced on January first. The submission deadline, as I said previously, would be April third. We would have the applications reviewed by the solicitor then in April. In May, the grant committee would look at the applications. Council would need to, would, would look at the recommendations, as we've done previously, and vote in June on the award of grants. We would like to announce the grants have been awarded and we'd like to do something this time a little more public in order to recognize the municipalities who've been awarded the grants and to get a little bit of notice. So if we're going to continue doing this, it would encourage other municipalities to apply for the funds. In June, fifty percent of the funds would be dispersed. And as the projects are completed and final reports are submitted, then the municipality would receive the remainder of the funds. You've looked, if you look on page fifty-nine, you can see how simple the application is. We're, we're asking for their information, a contact number, the municipality, the type of application. We feel that most of these funds will be used for either spraying of wood-boring insects of some kind or other, or, and/or remediation. As an example, some municipalities now are actually hiring companies to remove the trees that are dead because they're really hazardous to residents and children in parks. Or other, I mean, they may decide they're going to do an education program in their municipality about wood-boring insects. They might want to print some flyers. They might want to use the funds for that process. We're asking if they've received a prior grant and what year, if they have, yes or no. We're, we're simply asking for the amount. And then on, on page sixty, we're asking for a short concise description of what they're, what they're requesting, the timeline, when are you going to start, when do you expect to start, when do you expect to have the project completed. And then on page sixty-one, we're looking for cost. Very simply, an explanation, what are your expenses? How much money have you received from Act 13? And you notice other funding sources. You know, maybe they have a grant from another organization and they'd like to combine it with the Act 13 grant. Or maybe they're going to have private folks in the community who are willing to put forth money for the purpose. We want to know what their total funds are. And any other comments they'd like to tell us? And that's it. We try to make it as simple as possible so that municipalities would be encouraged to apply for the funds. And we just wish we had more money. Twenty-five hundred dollars in this case can go a long way. I just heard about a municipality that spent, I think approximately eighteen hundred dollars, and they had quite good luck finding someone to, to actually cut down trees. And then they made the wood available to people in the community who applied for a permit to pick up the wood and use it for their own resources. It was kind of a community event. So I'd like to thank Harry for serving, and Matt, and certainly Patrick, and...
Jen, I appreciate you guys. I want to publicly apologize too, because I missed the last two meetings.
That's fine.
And that was, I was, I'm sorry about that. But thank you, everybody.
We keep you in the loop. We keep you in the loop. So if you have any questions, you know, before the next meeting, I'd like us to, to vote on it next time before we go forth with this, yes?
Yeah, I just have a question. Well, I have, I have two things. I kind of like that language that's highlighted there that you wanted to remove because I think it explains in layman's terms what the purpose of that money is.
We can.
But I'm just wondering, because, you know, in the past, we've had this money that's been available and we allowed people to submit applications for different kinds of projects that sometimes included like playgrounds and things like that with kids as well. Why are we focusing only on wood-boring insects?
Because if you, I don't know if you recall, but last year, when I brought the subject up, we were in, I think Hazel Township, and we were talking about Act 13 funds. And I said, golly, wouldn't it be great if we can portion, use a portion of that specifically over and above the regular Act 13 funds for wood-boring infestation? Because it's such a huge problem. I even hate to bring up the new threat, you know, the lantern fly, which...
Yeah, but then we're not going to accept any other applications then?
Oh, sure. This is not, this is not all-encompassing, Linda. This, this is merely for the wood-boring infestation.
Okay, so...
This is not, this is over and above, this will not impact in any way our usual process for Act 13.
So it's like a side-by-side process?
Yes.
Okay.
Side-by-side.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, but the timeline is a little different, if you notice.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down, the budget meeting schedule has been attached. I think we passed it out last meeting, but we put it on the work session again so that everybody has a copy of the schedule. Pretty much mirrors the schedule we've been using in the past. It's been distributed to the manager, to the district attorney's office, and to the comptroller's office, so they know the budget schedule and the timeline. And so far, we've had no pushback from anything, so at this point, unless we hear something different, we'll move forward with the schedule. Unless somebody has an issue, then certainly we would...
November fifth, election night.
No. Yep, you're right. I mean, that's, and that's why we put it out there.
We're all home biting our nails.
Certainly, if you have a recommendation, we can look at that.
The fourth.
Monday?
Monday.
Monday evening?
I would...
Anyone else? Any thoughts on that? Instead of Tuesday the fifth, use Monday the fourth?
Is this room available?
Excuse me?
Is this room available? Is this room available?
Yeah, yeah.
Or election board talking to you?
They go over, they're in Penn Place now, Mr. Urban.
Okay.
So it, it would not be an issue as far as availability of this particular site.
Thank you, my friend.
Monday, all right?
Yeah.
And let's put that in there for Monday the fourth.
That would affect the district attorney and judicial records, is that okay, Joan? The day the fourth?
Well, we'll contact them.
Okay.
To make sure they're available. But I would think it'd be, hopefully, no issue, but if there is, we'll have to adjust. Okay? Anyone else? Public comment, so Stan's the owner?
I'm going to keep my comments to the suicide topic that was first discussed. All right. To me, the mystery of suicide was solved or resolved tomorrow on the anniversary of nine eleven. Why so many people at World Trade Center jumped? They called them jumpers. Why? Because to them, it was, they wanted to gain control of an otherwise, they had no other control. Suicide, the mystery was resolved centuries ago, a place called Masada, where the Jews would rather commit suicide than become slaves of Rome. Anyway, if you want, how many fathers commit suicide or murder suicide? Too many. And you want to diminish domestic violence? You can start by changing one word on one form. It's called the acknowledgement of paternity form. In the block where the mother signs, she gets to say, "my child." In the block where the father signs, he says, "the child." He signs that, he's handed over default custody to the, to the mother. It's a pre-adjudication. And from my research, because I went through a two-year custody battle with children and you, and I prevailed. In 2002, I gained full legal, physical custody of my daughter when she was two years old. She's now twenty. And I'll get back to that in a moment. But getting back to this form, this acknowledgement of a paternity form became obsolete in 1974 when the bastard child doctrine was abolished and the fornication law was repealed in Pennsylvania. At one time, the fornication law was, it was illegal for two people to engage in sex that weren't married. Okay? So you want to, you want to end domestic violence, you start by changing one word on one form. To me, it takes two to make a baby. Both, both parties contribute equal amount of DNA. In fact, we don't need that acknowledgement of paternity form anymore because we have DNA testing, which is more reliable. And through, I, listen, I saved as a time capsule my ordeal I had with children and you. To me, they're monsters. That's a criminal organization because they, it's a for-profit industry. So I prevailed. And the phrase I used back then, I was like, it was a booger that they could not shake off their finger. I kept my dignity. They wanted me to crawl in my belly and beg. I would not do that. It's, it's a war of attrition. They want to, you know, wear you out emotionally, physically, and financially, wanting you to give up the towel. And they need violence to get their way because they'll taunt you. And as soon as you, as soon as you cross that line, bingo, you act in any kind of physical way, it's over, they win. They think they can manage violence to acceptable limits. But all them say, you want to, I mean, I've heard reports, one father, he sits on the courthouse steps, throws gasoline on himself and sets him afire to send a message. So you want to diminish domestic violence, you change one word on one form. Both, both parties should say, "my child." Both should have default custody and then, then if there's a dispute, let the court settle it out.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, Mr. Shiner? Anyone else?
Would you like to adjourn, Mr. Chair? Hold on, if, if I may. I know the hour's getting late. I just wanted to mention for council, if you've, if, if you've seen in the newspaper, there was a little bit, a little bit of press recently about something called the Governor's Civic Engagement Award. It's something that, that I, as a councilman, and as someone that's been involved in education, I'm going to be in the next month, September being this big push for voter registration. I'm going to, in the next month, be reaching out to all of the high schools in Luzerne County. Because I think, as council, as members of council, I think that we have a responsibility. You know, we sit and we hear people complain and, and criticize, but they're not actively involved and they don't do anything. And what my goal is, the way that the Governor's Civic Engagement Award works is, it's something that's pushed from the governor's office and it encourages high school students of age to be registered and participate in voting. So I would like to reach out to my fellow educators and try to see that we could get, that we could get to that level. I mean, my, my goal would be to try to see that every, every high school in Luzerne County could achieve that status of, there's a gold level and a silver level, depending upon what percentage of kids. I know Valley West has done it in the past, and I definitely want to see high schools from all parts, the entire county, trying to participate in this and trying to get our young people involved. I think, you know, me personally, I think the, as soon as they're able to participate and we encourage that participation and to be active citizens and take an active role, we're going to have, you know, not only a better county, a better city, a better state, it's just going to multiply for us. So that's going to be something I wanted to, you know, let, share with my council members and I'm definitely going to be reaching out. So if you hear it, it's true. The last thing that I would say to you, I would remind this council, I would remind this council, the people that are left here in the audience and anybody in the public, you know, keep in mind tomorrow, that tomorrow is Patriot Day. And that's, you know, I know my colleague, Mr. Haas, who I'm also a former social studies teacher, with Patriot Day being with the observance of nine eleven and remembering all that happened that day and the heroes and the survivors and, and, you know, the many, many people that lost their lives. So I know, you know, we're going to be recognizing Patriot Day tomorrow. It's kind of real easy for us at Pittston area because we like to wear the red, white, and blue anyway. So we'll be recognizing Patriot Day and I hope that, you know, that our council keeps that in mind and spread the word on that as well, so, thank you.
Mr. Haas, do you want to adjourn in memory of Patriot Day in honor of?
Mr. Bibble made that motion as well.
That sounds great. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.